And good evening to you. Glad to have you with us for the Murfreesboro City School Board meeting, today being October 27th. We have some very special guests with us tonight. Five young men that are going to lead us in our pledge, and they are from Northfield, 6th graders Brandon Hartman, Cameron Elsie, and Todd Lauter, along with 3rd grader from Mitchell Nielsen, Parker Prater, and kindergarten student from Mitchell Nielsen, Landon Horton. We ask that you please stand now for our pledge, followed by a moment of silence. I'll ask you to remember one of our board members, Nancy Phillips, who is recovering at home from gallbladder surgery. Gentlemen?
(Inaudible) (Inaudible)
Thank you. Gentlemen, I must say a very big thank you to all five of you. Job well done. Hope you'll come back and jeez. And you don't have to leave. You're welcome to stick around a while. All right. We have a motion to approve our agenda for tonight that's in front of you.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Dr. Brown, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Communications, Dr. Gilbert?
Thank you very much. Good evening, Board. Welcome to Halloween week, when it's raining, the barometer's changing, there's a full moon, and it's just wonderful.
What more could you ask for?
I'm telling you, not a lot. At this time, I'd like for Lisa Traill, who is our communications director, to handle the communications, please.
Okay, I'm gonna take this and just turn it right over to Gary. How's that?
Thank you, Ms. Traill. Good evening, Board. We have a very special guest with us this evening, one of our newest employees that we want to introduce you to. And so I'd like to have Ms. Ava Jordan, who's over transportation, if she'd please come to the mic and introduce you to our newest employee.
Thank you very much, Gary. First off, I'd like to say thank you for having us tonight. We enjoy coming. Been several times. The second thing I'd like to do is introduce my transportation assistant, who is Brian Rom. He's somewhere back there. He's always behind you guys. That's a good thing. Right there, always. There's a few things. I left some pamphlets on your desk there. There's a few things that I would like to bring to your attention tonight. Every day in transportation, happiness starts with school bus yellow. Murfreesboro City Schools transports over 37,000 students a day. We, what? Excuse me, 3,700. He corrected me. We would really be doing good, wouldn't we? Okay, we have 30 buses on the road every day. 24 general education buses that run 48 routes in the AM and 65 routes in the PM. Six special education buses with 14 routes in the AM and 13 in the PM. Our buses travel approximately 2,000 miles a day. 360,000 miles in a school year. And I have to say, we are known for being safety. We have very few accidents during that time. I'm very proud of that. We have 71% of our students' bus time is 15 to 30 minutes in the afternoon, and 16% is 30 to 45 minutes. We have 13% that is right under one hour. I'm very glad to report, because I've heard in the news a lot of bad reports lately, we have 34 CDL licensed drivers. We have 27 bus assistants. That means every bus has an assistant on it. That is really wonderful for us. We would like to take the time to give you a special thank you. You'll see on your little rail running around, we have buses for everyone. This is our stress relief buses, and we do use them in the transportation department often. We also made a little card, a little card, for the school board, and we wanted to thank you. Now, all of our employees are still probably finishing up their routes right now and coming into the shop, so they all graciously signed the card for each and every one of you. I would appreciate if you would take a look at it, read everybody. They even tell you their position as to what they ride on, the bus that they ride on. At this time, I would like to say, we do have our newest member to our transportation department. He gets a little noisy sometimes, so we'll have to calm him down. But his name is Barney, and he is our school bus safety officer. Barney, come on in and see us this afternoon.
Thank you very much. Hi, everybody. My name's Barney. How you doing? Oh, it's so good. This is a big plane. This looks like a plane of ours. I don't know. Quickie, everything. I'm sorry.
(Inaudible).
I'm happy to be here. And I saw some boys and girls earlier. Are they still here? They appreciate it so much.
Stop, stop.
I can't. I want to get back up there.
Hey, Barney, wait, 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 wait. Barney?
Look at that.
Barney? I know you're excited.
You look so important. Miss Deidra?
Yes.
Am I in trouble?
No, no. Barney's not in trouble, is he?
No.
Oh, okay. Barney, you're not in trouble.
Thank you so much. It's so good to be here. Should I move forward a little?
Well, I know you're a little shaky. Is that...
I know.
Who's your bus driver?
Well, you know, there's this bus driver guy. His name is Mr. Bush. He's kind of new. You can see him right there.
I know. I was trying to show Mr. Campbell if he would like to see that.
Yeah. He's kind of new driving a bus, and he makes Barney a little shaky.
I saw that he was a little shaky.
But I appreciate him so much.
So what about your bus assistant? Do you have one?
I do have a bus assistant. You can see her on the other side. Her name is... Yes, the name is Deidra. She's wonderful.
Well, Barney, I hope she has some experience.
She does. She has lots of experience with the boys and girls to keep them safe, and she has a big heart for our children. That's what I appreciate so much. And I'm going to have you notice that the real high-energy children, we always place them closer to the front of the bus.
That's right. See our children? I'm kidding. There. Oh, okay. Hey, Barney, I think they got it. We're good, Barney.
I do appreciate y'all so much. You do such hard work for our boys and girls.
Oh, did you wink at them?
I did.
Oh, yes. We'll say, "Here, we'll turn you this way."
Those boys that did the pledge of allegiance, that was wonderful.
I know, and I know how much you love kids, Barney.
I do. And what I like the most of everything is teaching the boys and girls how to be safe on our school buses.
I know, Barney. Do you want to talk about your favorite thing that you're doing right now?
Well, you know, the favoritest thing I have to do. I have to be honest with you, Miss Deidra.
Do you remember?
I do.
Okay.
It's the bus evacuations. They're so awesome. Do you know what those are, Miss Deidra?
I know what they are. Do y'all know what our bus evacuations are? Barney, you want to go ahead and tell them?
Well, what we do, this is the cool part, stay with me now. We go to schools, and we actually get all the boys and girls who go on the bus, and we teach them how to evacuate the bus very safely in case of a very, very rare emergency.
That's right, Barney. Do you remember the time? How safe they need to get off the bus?
Well, I tell you what, Miss Deidra, they have to get off the bus in under two minutes, and 31 of our classes, of our wonderful boys and girls, got off the bus in under two minutes. Boo, yeah.
That's right. And we're fully loaded at 90 kids mostly on our buses, and they get off in under two minutes, don't they, Barney?
It was so awesome.
That's right.
I can't wait until they do that.
I know, Barney, and I know that's your favorite thing, because you're about safety.
I am about safety. You know, we go to the schools, and we're going to talk to boys and girls about all the things that they have to do to be very, very safe on the bus.
That's right, Barney, and there's a reward for that, if they're very safe on the bus and they follow all the rules.
You know, it's probably the most awesome thing I've ever seen. It's like, well, you know what? You're standing on a red carpet, and we have a red carpet program.
We sure do, Barney.
Yeah, well, we do. As we go, we tell the boys and girls, "You get to have a red carpet," which is a very special award for being such safe boys and girls on the bus.
That's right.
And there's going to be one this Thursday for bus 517.
Who's that bus driver?
It's Mr. Tim. He's quite awesome, and he's a high-tech train professional.
Oh, okay. Well, that's good. Hey, Barney?
Yeah.
Do you want to tell them about our other program that we're doing in the schools?
Well, we have this program called B-U-S.
What does that spell, Barney?
That spells, uh...
Barney.
Is there a student in the crowd that can help me with that? What is B-U-S?
There is no student, so maybe your bus driver can tell you what that spells.
What's that spell, dear?
Barney, I'm going to go ahead and say that spells bus.
I was thinking of sub.
Yeah, right. Oh, he's hungry, Barney.
You know, talk later.
Okay. Okay, so, yes, Barney, that's a very nice program. And who started that program?
Actually, Mr. Tony. He started that program.
That's right.
He worked so hard for the boys and girls to keep them safe. As a matter of fact, Tony, his name's Tony Bailey, I've never seen someone with a bigger heart for children than he has.
I know, and the kids respond very well to Mr. Tony.
They really do. We get to go and teach the boys and girls about how to sit on the bus, and how to get off the bus, and how to get on the bus, and I mean, you know, just really friendly and nice to everybody when they go to school.
That's right, Barney. So I know there's a couple more things we need to talk about, but do you want to show them your lights?
Well, I'd love to show them my lights.
Okay. I'm going to push you up some, okay?
Okay.
All right, Barney, let's show them your yellow lights.
Okay. I'm going to back up just a little bit.
Okay.
A little bit.
All right, you good? Okay.
I'm going to show them my yellers. There's my yellow lights.
Okay. All right, so there's your yellow lights.
And you know what those mean?
I know what they mean. They mean to slow down. So when cars see the school bus coming with the yellow lights, it means they need to slow down, because we're going to be loading or unloading children.
That's absolutely right. Let me turn my yellers off.
Okay.
I think I have... Do I have my headlights on?
Yeah, you got your headlights on. So there you go. Your headlights are on now, Barney.
Could you back me a little bit?
I will. I know you've got a new bus driver. I know that's kind of tough.
So everybody watching from home on TV land can see too.
Okay, Barney.
Well, you know, here's what I need to do, is go this way, just a little bit.
Oh, Barney, Barney. Oh.
Thanks, Mr. Bush.
Yeah, Mr. Bush. How long?
Backup camera.
Yeah, right. Mr. Bush is putting a work order in for a backup camera.
Very important here. This is my red light.
That's right. And he has a stop sign. Hey, Barney?
Yeah?
Will you turn so everybody can see? I'm going to push you up some. I know you've got a new driver.
Just a little bit.
Okay.
You can help me a little bit there.
You can go ahead and turn slowly. You have it. There you go. Okay, now stop.
Do you see a stop sign?
Do you see a stop sign?
Yeah.
Barney's proud of his stop sign.
I am proud of my stop sign, because that helps all the cars know when to stop, keep the boys and girls safe. Now, Miss Deidra?
Yes, sir.
I need to tell you that we have some cars to hand out, and we need an assistant.
We do need an assistant.
And I would suggest that we use our, well...
I think that's a... I think, yeah. I think you're making the right decision.
I think Brian Rom needs to come. He's our assistant director.
I think so.
And I have some cars. Thanks, Brian.
Okay, so these cards, yeah, these cards that he's handing out are part of the Barney Safety Officer Club, and you all are going to be our first members.
Yeah.
So, yes.
Barney, Barney, Barney.
I know you're excited, Barney.
I am.
Okay, Barney, so do you want to tell them about your secret thing that you keep inside the bus, and then we'll go?
Well, what's really cool about inside buses, all our buses have four or five cameras, and there's cameras inside me, so that all the boys and girls, and everything that they do, and everything they say, and everything is recorded. And you know why? It has to keep everybody safe.
That's right. And that's your favorite thing, isn't it, Barney?
It really is. I like keeping our boys and girls safe, because I know our school board members work very hard for their safety and their education, and I just want you to know that I appreciate you all.
So Barney, I appreciate you all. He is very excited to be here.
Thank you so much.
And now they're a part of your club, Barney.
They are a part of my club. I invite them to come over any time and watch the bus program.
Okay.
And watch the bus evacuation.
I think that's a great idea. So, and your bus driver, is he going to keep his job?
Well, I'm...
He's me, Barney, he's me.
I know the bus aide has it under control.
The bus aide's very, very good. And Mr. Bush, he shows promise, so he's...
Oh, okay, good. He shows promise. Okay, Barney, okay, we'll work with that.
And I know you're all very, very busy, and we just have a little bit of time, but I do want to thank you for allowing Barney to be part of this organization and to really help with our amazing boys and girls. That's the reason why we're here, is to love them and teach them to be safe.
That's right, Barney. So are you ready to go now?
I am. I hate to go, but I know they have work to do, so thank you so much for having me.
Thank y'all very much. I'm going to turn it back over to you, Ms. Ava.
Thank you so much. Sorry I have to be, but there's work to be done. I got to recharge my batteries. You're ready for the boys and girls. Hi, Ms. Ava, how you doing?
Hi, Barney. Hey, Barney.
Yes?
We would like for you to send your handler out to us, so everybody can meet him. And the parents at home, please take your children away from the TV so they will not see this. We would like to have it a secret for our kids. Come on out, Tim.
I'm right here.
This is Mr. Tim.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Very good.
He does a wonderful job. They both do a wonderful job. And we thank you very much for having us. We thank you for all that you support that you give to the transportation department. We're proud to be there. I thank you personally for allowing me to have this position. I love my job, and I want to make everybody proud and be the best supervisor I can be. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
I have a question.
Barney, I know you don't believe this, but I at one time did drive a bus from Murfreesboro City Schools. You've been laughing forever, but...
I believe you. I believe you. Talk later.
Well, they went away, though, so I did have a question. When is Barney... When is the safety program? When do the children have the safety program?
We schedule them through, I think...
We have them scheduled. All of our bus evacuations are scheduled, usually about two every week. We do one school. Right now, we have seven schools that we have accomplished this year. Brian Rom does all the scheduling with the schools. We have anywhere from three to five buses at each school when we do that, so we can get every student. Like you say, half of our students don't ride a school bus on a regular basis, but they do go on field trips. So we always want every student to know how to evacuate a bus within that two minutes, because a bus can burn completely down within two minutes. And we do our Bus, Buses United for Safety, our bus program, that will be starting in November, where we go into the schools. We've done several of them last year. We're going to try to hit every school this year, where we go in and deal with the one-on-one basis with every child, to teach them exactly how to get on the bus safe, how to cross the street safely, how to get off the bus safely, and to respect their other peers on the bus, you know, by behaving and definitely not bullying. We are definitely against that, and we watch that very carefully on our buses.
Well, thank you. I know that y'all's jobs must be crazy, and I appreciate your whole staff and the bus drivers. I hear compliments about the bus drivers and their care for children all the time, so if you'll please express that, we really appreciate their hard work and what they do for the kids.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me, Barney. You're more Barney. You're the best at the show. Okay, I'm coming.
It's a tough act to follow.
Thank you, Ms. Traill. You're going to have a hard time beating that up.
Okay. So we would like to also congratulate Emily Spencer for winning the Ruthie Award for Favorite Principal. Also, our Ruthie finalist included Mr. Don Barch and Ms. Robin Mule. So we do want to point out that our principals got out there and got the vote out. So also, congratulations to Dr. Christy Mall. She was just named to the State Board of Tennessee Associated for the Gilted. Christy is a teacher at Discovery Center. Congratulations to Mary Allison for being asked to be a presenter at the Tennessee Council for Exceptional Children. It's their annual fall conference. She just presented last weekend, and Mary is at Bradley Elementary. Also, to David Lockett, who was honored by proclamation by the city of Gallatin, as well as Volunteer State Community College, for his work with students in the STEM program. David leads the STEM camps at several of the local universities, including MTSU, and David just joined us at Mitchell Nielsen this year. She's a 6th grade teacher there. We also want to thank our City Schools Foundation. City Schools Foundation just awarded $50,000 in grants to several of our teachers. Those grants included Little Bits Help Makerspace, written by Beth Turner with Discovery; Exploration Through Life Cycles, written by Jessica Dozier at Scales; Mozarts in a Minute, this was a collaborative grant by Kelly Kleppinger, Luke Hill, Tony Hartman, and Ryan Stewart. They are from Discovery, overall on Scales, so they'll be sharing their boards together. Breaking the Code of the Future, written by Ms. Christy Mall at Discovery; Zvero Hero, Beth Turner at Discovery; STEAM: An Integrated Approach to Art and STEM by David Lockett at Mitchell Nielsen; K2 Makerspace, Kayla Mullin at Discovery; Building Bridges, Heather Knox, Laura Kahler from Northfield and Kason Lane, again, two schools coming together for one project. Fun with Fractions, Involve Me and I Learn by Rachel Slough at Scales; Walking and Talking Math, Language, Science, and Social Studies, Donna Veers at Bradley; Tasks to Awesome Learners, Karen Godwin at Northfield; Literally Math, David Lockett at Mitchell Nielsen; Differentiated National Geographics Kids Explorer by Kimberly Carroll at Scales. Our largest grant that the City Schools Foundation has awarded to, a teacher grant, was awarded this year to Tickling the Ivories. That was a $22,000 grant, written by Diana Polk and Melanie Noe at Northfield. So we look forward to seeing the ivories get tickled there. Foundation Instructional Kit, Ann O'Boyle at Erma Segal; and Fab Labs with Little Bits, Michelle Eaton at Erma Segal as well. I want to go ahead and ask Principal Mule to join me, so she can kind of describe what you're seeing in front of you tonight, but also want to take time to thank Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue, Murfreesboro Police Department, and Rutherford County Sheriff's Department Mounted Patrol for their services during Mitchell Nielsen's Fall Festival, as well as several other fall festivals that's happened around the district. I will go ahead and give it to you for your display, as well as your lesson.
All right, which would you like me to do first? Okay. First, I would like to say, good evening to everyone, and thank you for this opportunity to thank Ginger and Danny Demumbryan with Sinkin' Creek Farms. They, along with the College of Behavioral and Health Sciences at MTSU, and All-in-One Recycling, support our Third Thursday Clubs at Mitchell Nielsen, and so we appreciate that. They come out every third Thursday and help us with our clubs. And Sunette P. and the other realtors at Bob Parks donated pumpkins to Mitchell Nielsen, and we've brought a few of them here tonight for you. Each classroom gets a pumpkin, and the classroom students work with their teacher and come up with ideas of how to decorate this pumpkin. The only thing we tell them is that they can't cut it, because they're out for a little while, and they start to get squishy if they cut them. But you can see, we've got some fabulous pumpkins. I think we brought 11 of them here. We have about 30 of them, and it was hard to go through and pick, but they've got some pretty neat ones. Several of them are from books. The one by Mr. Barrett is from the book called Gruffalo, and our School Safety and Education Officer, Chris Williams, read that book to Ms. Crumball's 2nd grade classroom, so that is their creation. We have Pig in a Wig over there where Ms. Phillips sits, and Olaf from Frozen near Mr. Anderson. We've got the Cat in the Hat and Cookie Monster, and a box of popcorn and goodies from the movie, and the ANW Root Beer. We have Raphael, one of the Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtles, Arthur, and one of my favorites is our Mitchell Nielsen Eagle. So each of the... We display those on both sides of the street. These are from the primary and the elementary school, and the children vote on them, and we have our teachers vote and any visitors that come in. As a matter of fact, Bob Parks sent a bunch of people today to vote on the pumpkins, and each penny is a vote. And so we... The money... The pumpkin that raises the most money wins, and then all of the proceeds go to our councilor's fund for, like, field trips and uniforms and things like that. So we never know who's going to win right until the very last minute, because we have some teachers that are running down there putting $20 bills in there, so it's pretty cool. So we'll see, and I hope you will vote on your favorite. Thanks.
Thank you. Those look great.
That is the end of the communications chairman, so I'll give it back to you.
I think we have one more congratulatory. Don't we? Did we also have the Ruthie's Award Favorite Teacher?
Yes, we did.
From Erma Segal?
We did.
Rachel Haynes, wasn't that right?
You are very correct. I apologize.
Thought I saw that, then. And I thought it was great we had both of them from the same school.
Right.
In the city school system.
Thank you for grabbing that one, yes.
All right, very good. Some good things already. All right. Consent items? Do I have an approval for the consent item?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Have a second? All right, very good. Some good things already. All right. Consent items? Do I have an approval for the consent item?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. King, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposition? All right, there is none. All right. Reports and information?
I want you to notice how well I planned this tonight, so that I don't have to say anything. It's really nice. Gary Anderson.
The board asks for-
I'm not going to say that.
Board asks for a report on the summer feeding program, and so Ms. Shealy is here to tell you how many meals we serve this summer to all of our children.
Good evening. You notice, past summer, we added our addition to our second bus, our second chow bus, and we also added our small bus, Sprout, which allowed us to go from 18 sites to 31 sites that we were able to feed the children at. You have the paperwork in front of you, as far as the sites are broken down, by lunch and also breakfast. The total number of breakfasts that we served this year were 42,094, and lunches, we did 54,305. So, we were able to reach quite a few more children this year with the addition of the two new buses. Any questions?
I have a question. I just want to thank you and your staff for doing such a great job. When you think about the total number here, it's just kind of astronomical, and there's no reason a child should be hungry in this city, and I really commend you for doing this.
Well, thank you. And there's more children out there for us to reach, so we're going to keep going.
Great.
Mr. Chairman.
Did you, excuse me one second. Did you say we had that report?
We have individual-
Yes.
We have individual, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I was looking for a total. What, give me that total again, please.
Breakfast was 42,094, and lunches were 54,305.
I don't have that. Okay.
It's broken by sites.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
So, again, it is a fabulous program, and I've spoken to you about it, but I really appreciate your heart with it. But I do want to know, how are we using the chow buses now?
Now?
In school?
They go out to different, to schools. I have teachers and principals contacting me, and we reserve them for, we do them for Fall Fest. We do them for classroom celebrations, reward parties. We also take one of the chow buses out in the evening, and we serve supper at one of our locations.
I could see that as being the next step.
Yes.
Because I do, I see one of them every day.
Oh, yeah.
So, I was just hoping that we can, you know, this is a lot. I mean, this is amazing, but that's just one season of the year, so there's so much more that could be done.
The chow bus calendar is pretty full right now, but we're always finding more places that we can go, so.
No, fantastic. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. King?
Just two things. Simple thing. You fed from May 26th until the end of July, is that right?
July 31st.
Okay. And I'll say, I know that the story of the chow buses reached as far north as Minnesota. I had a conversation with someone, and he was telling me that he'd heard it on NPR, but the person he had the conversation with lived up there, heard about it, was very impressed, and was starting to Google it to try to find out what they had to do to do it.
When it hit NBC Nightly News, I got calls from Alaska, Washington DC, Florida. So, I've been talking to people about how they can start the same type of program.
Other questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Well done. Well done.
I think we did.
The next item is the custodial update. At the last board meeting, you requested information on how we were doing on staffing. I included a memo in the board packet for you. I just wanted to update you, since we, I made this report for you on the 21st, and today being the 27th, six days later, we had two of our employees resign. We hired five additional employees, and we have nine interviews scheduled for tomorrow. As you can see, we are getting to the point where we should be fully staffed with our own employees and use the temporary employees for part-time subs. We're working towards that. We have a few more that we need to work through, and then we'll be at that point. So, it's taken us time, but we're getting there now. We feel much better about the program. We have all of our equipment in every school. We have a good stock of dispensers, paper goods, and chemical supplies, and we are, the only piece of equipment we're sharing now is our high-speed buffers, which are the ones that put the high gloss on the floors, and the reason for that is they're extremely expensive, and so we are sharing those from school to school.
How many of those do we have?
Three high-speed buffers right now.
Okay. Any questions? All right, sir. Thank you.
Okay, the next item on your agenda is Proposory Zoning Plan, and I'm going to go up to the podium, so I can show you the revised plan up there. And in your board packet is all the information that we have for you on the numbers and the overall projection of where things will be, so I'll walk up there, so I can show you. Board members, as you know, we've grown quite a bit. Last year, we grew over 620 students, and this year, we've already grown 306 from where we ended last year. From the same month last year to this year, we've grown 416 students. That precipitated the need for us to go ahead and do some rezoning. As you know, we're adding 10 additional classrooms at Hobgood, so we have some space there. And we have also been pinched on Reeves Rogers and John Pittard, and we have some additional classroom space at Northfield. So, the rezoning plan that we are presenting to you involves four schools. Two of them are losing students to other schools, and two schools are gaining students. It's all up on this section of the map, all up on the northeast side of the map here. What I want to do is go through and show you the parts that we are moving, and show you that we did keep contiguous zones. We're not jumping over anybody else. We're not having them separated. And so, in the first one is to Hobgood, with the extra space at Hobgood, this little box right here that I'm outlining, we moved from the Reeves Rogers zone. This used to be Reeves Rogers. We are proposing to move that particular group of students to go over to Hobgood to help us fill those new classroom spaces there. The numbers are in your, in your book, but basically, it's about 119 students that are in that area. The other thing, we were going to utilize the capacity of the Hobgood new classrooms, is to take two pre-K classrooms out of John Pittard. Now, since pre-K is a single-year program, it's not impacting any of the students at that. It's just moving our program from one building to another, which gives us two additional classrooms at John Pittard. The other area that we plan to move and propose move is right here, through here by, here's the airport, and, and the sports comm, and then come down here and pick up the area off Northfield Boulevard to go to Northfield. Northfield's right there, and just this area right here. That area has about 123 students that we anticipate going there, moving over to Northfield. The proposal, as we've done it every other time, is ask the board to consider a grandfathering policy for students who are currently fourth graders and fifth graders, to allow them to continue at their zone school where they are now, and not move. But the only thing is, we would have to have them provide their own transportation if they can. So, we would allow grandfathering for fourth, rising fourth and fifth graders, so they would be fifth and sixth graders at their current school. And we have what we like to call a sibling policy. If they have a sibling, a younger sibling, that sibling can also stay in that school with them. We are not about splitting up the families and making them one go to one school, one go to the other school. We want to keep them together. So, that's, that's where we are as far as the actual layout of the, of the plan. Our, our goal is to get these things moved, so we can reduce the crowding potential at John Pittard. John Pittard has in it right now 975 students, and that school is designed to hold right at 1,000 students. We are also now in the portables at Reeves Rogers. We, we redid the portables. We refurbished them this summer, hoping we would not have to use them, and within a few weeks of school, we had to put classes out into the portables. So, by this rezoning, we will be able to get all the students back in the main school and not utilize the portables for classrooms. So, those are the two main, main things we need to do to relieve the, what we feel is going to be overcrowding at those schools as we continue to grow. The other interesting thing is that we have found that, every month, I get a report from the city that shows the amount of growth that we are experiencing in each school zone. And the Reeves Rogers zone, when we first looked at this three years ago, they really didn't have any growth, and now they already have 60 homes already approved to go in there. So, there's development coming in that area, so we need to prepare for that. And if the city annexes any additional properties up around the John Pittard zone, we need to have some additional room there. It seems like everyone wanting to move to Murfreesboro, because there's job opportunities, it's a great economy, that the zones will shrink and shrink and shrink down in size. Now, as you can see, just before, the John Pittard zone was all the way up here, all the way here. This was John Pittard zone, all of this. And now, it's just, as you can see, it looks kind of like the little V, like Vanderbilt logo there. It's just that. So, we're, we're going to be shrinking the school zones down as they grow. The same thing's going to happen on the west side of town, when this is the overall creek zone, and eventually, we're going to have to shrink that zone down, too. The reason you see a lot of white, I always get asked this a lot by people, is why is there so much white on this map? Well, that's because that's not area that's been annexed into the city, and so those areas are not part of the city proper, and so we cannot colorize the map to show that. So, all these white areas are county property. And you can see here, they, this line up here, they go along and they come and touch up into this area, and they can see that line going up into there. That's just along the interstate, and so that area there is also part of the city that is owned for John, for overall creek. Didn't know if you would have any additional questions for me on it, but before I get to that, I wanted to say that we do have meetings planned. Two community meetings are planned. Thursday night, if the board says, go ahead and move forward with this plan, and by the way, we're not asking you for a vote tonight on the plan. We're asking you for permission to go out, show it to the general public, and get input, so you can vote on it eventually in November at, at your board meeting. But we have a, a meeting planned for Hobgood this Thursday night, starting at 5:30. Now, we label it 5:30 to 6:30, but we do that to make sure people come in, because we'll stay as long as we need to stay. But basically, 5:30 to 6:30 is for this Thursday at Hobgood, and then the next meeting is over at Northfield next Tuesday, from 5:30 to 6:30. We chose those two schools, because that's where the students will be zoned to, and so we wanted the people to see what the school would be. Now, these are come-and-go meetings, like we've done in the past. Board members, we appreciate when you're there. The staff will be there. Administration will be there. Principals will be there, just so that people can talk with people about the plan itself. So, if anyone has any questions about what we've done with this plan and what we're trying to do for the school system.
Ms. Rehneer?
I just have one that families perhaps might have a question about, because it kind of hit me when you stated it now.
Hello.
When you stated it. Now, the families of the rising fourth and fifth graders who may be able to be grandfathered, what if there's a kindergarten child in that family? Does that mean when the fourth and fifth graders have completed their education, does the kindergartner have to go back to the zone school?
That's a great question. What we have done is, we have not rezoned them back. They can stay at the school unless there is a total rezoning of the district where we have to move students. Then, they would be part of it. But we allow the siblings to track along the same path. Once again, they'll still have to provide their own transportation, because the buses aren't going to be going in that area, because the zones are transportation zones.
Right.
But that's a great question. Again, we want to, we want to give continuity to the families as much as we can. Anytime you rezone, it's not the most favorite thing to do, but, but we're trying our best to, to ease the pain.
And these families have not just recently been rezoned. We've gone through that as well.
That's another good question. There's been parts of the area that were rezoned, but with the grandfathering allowed for fourth and fifth graders then, grandfathering allowed for rising fourth and fifth graders, and then counting the sixth grade, that covers five years of it. So, there was the potential of maybe kindergarten or first grader that might have been rezoned before. What we have found is, the areas that, in question of this, and this, oh, my light is not working. There it is. This area here has a lot, a lot of, of people coming, moving in and out, and so I asked the principal, I says, is there any way to put an eye, a figure on this? She said, there's so much mobility there. There's very few that we'd even know of that would be here at the, back in the original one versus now, that fall into that kindergarten first grade position.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Board members? Mr. Barrett?
Part of our growing pains as a city, but I appreciate, I see that you're using a lot, you're trying to use neighborhoods and streets, so that's, that's good to see that on the map. So, try to keep the clusters together.
Yes, thank you. We're trying not to move little pieces. You want to move a subdivision or a community together, so that they'll have friends when they go to a new setting, and so that's what we've done. You don't want to pick out little 20 or 30 groups. You want to pick out larger numbers than that. So, yes, thank you. And we try to keep on the main thoroughfares, so that we can make the easy dividing lines. Thank you.
Other questions?
Notes have already gone home to the Hobgood, those affected by the move to Hobgood?
We are sending those out tomorrow. We want to make sure you guys were okay with us going out to the community with it.
It's kind of short notice.
It, it is, but it's not, they will still, the, the maps are going to be at the schools. We're going to have a thing on the, on the website where they can send in, and at the meetings, we will have sheets that people can fill out to ask questions, and as in the past, we'll accumulate all those questions to get you what the people are saying about that for you. But yes, the timeline is quick on that, and the whole thing is, we try to get these things done before holidays and things, so people are not worrying about it, and we can get through the process.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
Let me make sure I understand your answer to Ms. Rehneer's question. Situation, okay, I've got a fifth grader, so would normally be rezoned, but because they're a fifth grader, they can stay in their home school at the present time. I have a kindergarten student also in that school, and I understand what you're saying is, that that kindergarten student can remain in that home school until they leave Murfreesboro City Schools?
The only, yes, sir. They can stay in that school unless we have a total rezoning of the district where we have to move large numbers.
That's okay. That's the way I understood it. All right, thank you. Other questions? Mr. King?
Real simple. And these changes don't go into effect until August of next year, correct?
That is correct. We want to give people plenty of time for the adjustments.
Okay.
Ms. Smith?
And these lines are drawn entirely because of geographic location. The academic, you know, ramifications have not been taken into consideration. It's just, they're on the street. That's where they are.
Right. We look for subdivisions and things, and when we do it, we look at the map blind as far as other factors, other than where people are living and, and proximity to the school, for the neighborhood school, and the fact that we do not want to split up a community, and we want to keep the zone contiguous. So, yes, we, we do not look at other factors in this process.
Any other questions? Board members?
One more.
All right, Mr. King?
Since we've been talking about the buses tonight, this new realignment, what is the impact on the, on the Transportation Department? Positive?
I shared this with the Transportation Department, make sure they're okay with it, and they actually are very excited about it, because what we've done is, we've taken students out of the 8:30 time starting schools, and they're going to 7:30 time starting schools, which helps transportation, because the number of buses, because, because Pittard and Reeves grew so fast, we have more buses there than we anticipated originally. So, that changes the configuration, so they're excited about that opportunity, because when, you notice when she told you about the bus routes, there's more routes in the afternoon and in the morning. This helps.
I hate that we have to do this so quickly to these fam, to any families that are doubly impacted from last year to this year, and move them around. But as Mr. Barrett said, I guess that's just, there's some good things about growth in Murfreesboro, and then there's some negatives, and I guess everybody's got to take some good and bad.
Well, we're going to be, if we're going to continue the growth of 800 to 1,000 every couple of years, that's a new school.
Yeah.
And that forces rezoning.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Anderson? Thank you, sir, very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, board.
Good explanation. Well done. All right. Revenue, is that where they are?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Anderson, I think you're still on board.
Do we need a motion to allow this to proceed to be presented to the parents?
I think he said no.
Oh.
Ms. Baker?
I'd-
Yes, that, that would be fine. That way, he knows the will of the entire board.
Okay, all right. All right, so do we have a motion, then, that, to proceed with the present rezoning plan that we're looking at and present it to, at these two public meetings, and also to the general public as well?
I'll make that one.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you, Mr. Jared Barrett. Thank you very much. Any discussion on those motions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, board. Next thing is the, the budget review, and at this point, we're down 2,757,000. That is pretty normal, that we are always at this time into a negative cash position, because of our tax-based money hasn't started coming in yet for the holidays and property tax, and that's when we use our fund balance to operate our district at. Last year, at this time, we were down 2,118,000. The biggest difference is, this year, we gave the board allocations to the schools a month early, which is over $400,000 that we advanced to the schools ahead of time. As you remember, in your budget, you approve board allocations to the schools for things like supplies, library, art, things like that. So, we did it in a month earlier than that. So, that's, that's part of the reason that our cash position isn't as strong as it was last year. Revenue-wise, we are, we are ahead of collections on sales tax, and we are ahead of collections in some of the other areas, like the basic education program, and of course, the city gave us additional funds, so that number is up as well. So, our overall revenue picture is up slightly over last year, which is always good news, to see the increase in the tax, the property taxes, I'm sorry, in the sales taxes. That's always a good thing. On the expenditures, we are slightly ahead, but as I said, we paid $400,000 out a month earlier, so next month, it won't show up in the report. This is reflective of the increase in our, in our salaries, and of our capital outlay expenditures that we've spent so far this year. We are at the 25% mark of the year, when this budget, this goes through September, and that's a 25% mark, so our expenditures are behind 25%, which again, is always good news to have. Does anyone have any questions on the, on the finance part? Okay, the, the personnel report is, is, is in your packet for your review. If anyone has any questions, Mr. Ringstaff is here on that one. And then, the last piece that I have for you is the enrollment report. As I mentioned at the podium earlier, we are up 306 students. That's a 3.8% increase. The state says anything over 2%, then you get to share in the extra growth money. Growth money typically comes in January and June or July, depending on when they, they, they figure it out, so we are in line to get growth money again. We did not budget any growth money, because we never know what to expect.
We did not budget any growth money because we never know what to expect, so those are always good things. The other really interesting thing is, our attendance was 98% for the month, and this ended October 2nd, this period. We give you every 20-day periods, that's the way the state does it, and we're at 98% attendance, which is great. Our overall pupil teacher ratio is at 19.89. Now, I know that we have grown since this report, so, you know, next month, we expect it to be up a little bit more. We were up 416 students over where we were last year at the same accounting period.
Mr. Barrett?
With this growth we keep seeing, you don't anticipate us maybe needing a school bus during this year?
Right, for next year or for...
For this current year, are we going to be needing it?
No, we actually, we got our buses in, and so, we have a few spare buses right now. Thank you very much for that. When one breaks down or field trips and things, we have those. The special needs bus was delivered earlier in the month, so we have our buses right now. We're in good shape on our buses for this year.
Even with the projected growth that you just said?
Yes, it won't grow fast enough because we don't, the ridership is not 100% of the growth, so we should be fine.
Good. All right.
Any other questions on the attendance report? I'm sorry?
I just have one question slash comment. You just said we're up 416 students over last year, and last year, would you tell the public how much we had grown because that almost creates a school, right?
Yes. Last year, for the whole year, we grew 620 students.
So, that's 1,000 more.
And so far this year, we've grown 306 over where we ended last year. So, we've grown 306, 620, and you know, over 900 and change, 926. As I said earlier, that, our schools, we built, you know, you're building another school.
Right.
We have capacity at the schools, that's why we did the rezoning plan, and in our capital outlay, I'm sorry, capital improvement plan, we've put in some extra classrooms, again, at Black Fox and Hobgood. So, we're hoping that'll help alleviate those issues that we're facing.
I think it's important for everybody to know the situation that we're in with growth and that we will be needing to commit to something else before very long.
Yes, right now, there's over 500 lots approved on the west side of town.
I know. I know.
Any other questions on attendance? Any other items to come before the board? Any other business? Ms. Smith?
I have a few things I just wanted to mention. One thing is that, and I don't know how to phrase this appropriately, but I hear all the time, and I know you all do too, about how hard it is to be a teacher right now, and I want the teachers to know that we really, we're talking about business stuff, and you know, we're talking about numbers all the time, but we really do care, and we have your back. So, if you need anything from us, if there's anything that we can alleviate the stress, please come to the board members to say, you know, what we can do. So, but do know that we care for the teachers, and we know that there are a lot of stresses, and that you're not getting to carry out your passion sometime exactly the way that you want to. So, I did want to express that, and I feel like all the rest of the board members feel that way. Another thing I wanted, on a totally, not totally different note, Mr. Barrett and I went to a fantastic program at the Tennessee School Board Association where it, we talked about tools and how to work with our legislators and get the word out to our parents and our teachers when we have very important votes that impact the teachers and the students. And so, I'm hoping that we can do that so that, so when we have really big votes that could change our everyday world, that we can get that message out to them. So, I hope we have the tools for that. And then, my third thing is, yesterday, and I'm sure the board members know that, the kids were out of school, and we had the parent-teacher conferences. And my child's school did something that I thought was great, and I'm sure that not every school can do this, but when they can, I think that might be worth trying, and that was the student-led conferences. And it was so rewarding to see a child tell about her own abilities, where she needed to work, you know, what she needed to work on, how she was behaving in the classroom, and to see in comparison to what the teacher thought and what the teacher thought was an improvement. So, I thought that was a great experience, and I think that was a really good call of our board's part to have that day off for the kids to have those conferences.
Had great reports from yesterday. I know Robin Newell actually tweeted all day long about her student-led conferences, but, and she had many classrooms that were 100%. Heard from most principals, the increase was terrific this year, so I certainly think that when we bring the calendar to you and we're talking calendar, that those days need to stay in. We were able to flex the schedules a little bit this year with the idea of scheduling so that the parents, the greatest number of parents, could be there, and I think that was helpful too, but really positive reports from yesterday.
Now, was that done? Grade level, where did the student-led conference start, at what grade level?
All the way down to pre-K. Would you mind if Robin, Robin, would you come talk about that, please, a little bit?
Yes, we did school-wide student-led conferences from preschool to sixth grade. All students did.
Could you talk about what that looks like? Because you mentioned it yesterday when we were on the radio.
Yeah, it looks different in different grade levels, depending on the grade level, of course. The kindergarten students might, they all start off, at our school, we have leadership notebooks, so they would start sharing their leadership notebooks. They have academic and personal goals. One teacher told me yesterday, or this morning actually, during our PLC meetings, that one of the first graders was telling the mother that her academic, or her personal goal was to get along better with her brother at home, and the mother's like, you have been doing that. So, that was kind of cool. But they might, academic might be to, you know, in August, I knew 10 sight words, and now I know 40. Or I, my goal was to increase the amount of reading I do at home, and so, this is where I started, and this is where I am. I know some of the fifth grade students took their data and turned it into PowerPoints, and so, showed their parents on a PowerPoint, so it's kind of cool. Last year, we had several grade levels that did it, kind of scattered across the school, and this year, we had everyone doing it. And so, some of the teachers that were kind of skeptical about it were amazed at, like Ms. Smith said, to have those children take ownership of their learning and talk about what they're doing. We had several classrooms that had 100% attendance for conferences, and that's just unheard of. I emailed Dr. Gilbert last night and said, okay, one last email, I have to brag about this. So, it was really neat, and I think it's because the kids were saying, I've got to go, I've got to go, it's my conference. So, that was pretty nice.
So, we're looking at doing it district-wide. It's something I've talked to the principal about. We have some training to do, but it's, not only is it proven to help as far as academics when students can set their own goals, just like we do when we set goals, but it also, I think, a lot of times, we don't have parents and children talking quite as much maybe about academics and about school, and I think that there's that, and then I think it does an amazing job of really linking the school and letting the school, letting the parents know that the school cares about that relationship. So, we've had, all the schools tried it a little bit. We had several that did it school-wide, and I think that's what we'll be moving to.
And if you would like to come to our Leadership Day on November 13th, you can witness those student-led conferences in action. That's the day we're inviting other schools to, from around middle Tennessee, and we've got some schools coming as far away as from Mississippi to visit our school and look at how the leadership works at Mitchell-Nelson, and during that time, we'll have students in the library that are showing their leadership notebooks, and we'll do those student-led conferences, and Ms. Rineer came last year, so we'd like to invite you to that.
We had a, we actually did a videotaping of a teacher at Scales, I believe, Sherry, and so, I don't know, are we going to put that on the website, or will that go? Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you, Robin.
Claudia, I appreciate your comments about our support in realizing what teachers are having to do. Yesterday was, students were out of school preparing conferences, but I'm sure many of you know, I know, because I, where I live, the school across the street, but I also know of other schools that some teachers have been having conferences for a week or more, trying to get, make sure they can get all the parents in, either after school or on Saturdays, and that is truly a dedication from the teacher in regards to the student and also the parents, and I applaud them for that. I know that was done this year, it had been done in years past as well. We have some very dedicated teachers in our school system.
Yes, we do.
And I would hope, I would hope that the media, and I would hope that the public and those who are in positions of legislation would discuss with teachers and discuss with principals and discuss with central office staff when they are making decisions about education, because it can look very different in that classroom than it looks on a piece of paper.
Very much so. Mr. Barrett?
One of the things that Ms. Smith already said, we went to that TSBA conference, and one of the things was, we all need to become advocates for public education. We can't stand silent, and we need to contact our state legislators and let them know we're out there and we're listening, and we want them to listen to us. So, we just need people to step forward and start letting them know that.
Was that meeting with TSBA, was that where the idea of board members going in and meeting with faculty and encouraging them to become involved? And I know Rutherford County, they have already started doing that, and they're meeting with every school in that system. A board member is somewhere just to encourage them to become involved and know what's going on, and I think it's something we need to get on board and do as well.
That was part of the conversation that was there. There were so many, you know, great communications ideas, but Mr.?
Mr. Blair.
Mr. Blair did talk to the group about that.
All right.
That's great.
All right. Anything else coming for our board tonight? A very good meeting, good student involvement and good activities going on in schools, and a lot of good congratulatory comments, and it just goes to show, we've got a great system. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Anybody in opposition? Good night.